I'm sorry, September fourteenth meeting of the Milford Board of Education. I'm sorry for the delay. We had some technical difficulties. But we are ready to get our meeting underway now. If we could all please stand wherever you are and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Ms. Griffin, can you please do a roll call? Board members, you can unmute yourselves to answer the roll call, please.
Adam D. Young.
Here.
Andrew Fowler.
Here.
Rita Hennessy.
Here.
Emily McDonough Souza.
Here.
Warren Palowski.
Present.
Una Petrowski.
Here.
Betsy Ratner.
Here.
Nicole Lawson.
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Here.
And Susan Glennon.
I'm here.
All present.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffin. So, good evening, everyone. Again, this is the September fourteenth, twenty twenty business meeting of the Milford Board of Education. Welcome. Before we get into the superintendent's report, I just have a couple of items to report on during my chair's report. Our high school liaisons will be joining us beginning next month. I, we will welcome them back and I'll personally be very glad to see them again. Just so that you all know that any, the COVID-related budget review that we have been undergoing will be on the committee of the whole meetings going forward. So, our next committee of the whole meeting is on the twenty-eighth of September. So, that will be one of the agenda items for that meeting. And normally, we will, would be beginning our budget work this month with our budget priorities and assumptions. But given the uncertainty of all the endemic issues, we are going to hold off a month on that and we'll start that work next month as well. So, does anybody have any liaison reports? Any board members have any liaison meetings that they went to this month? I think things are probably just getting started to go. Andy, Mr. Fowler.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. Yes, the permanent school facilities building committee met in late August. Just to, just to bring everyone up to speed, we discussed the new entryways that they're building across all the schools. It should be, those should be completed later this month, but they're waiting on some type of special glass for the interior doors. And also, they updated us on that the academy and other roofs are, that need to be completed. And there's some other installation projects at Meadowside, Harborside, and Orchard Hills that are in the works. So, that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Mr. D. Young.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. Milford Education Foundation recently did a leadership retreat and they are reworking some of their highest-profile initiatives so that they can be more proactive in helping through some of the difficult COVID-related issues that most of their events require in-person participation. So, they're, they're working to try and develop programs that will be enriching to students while also keeping the spirit of their programs alive. I know that they have worked closely with Milford Public Schools on developing a video production program. I'm not sure where that stands as of yet, but we will be meeting next week to discuss that further. But that's one of the initiatives that they're doing to rework their initiatives that they generally do this time of year.
Mr. D. Young, are there any other board members that have a liaison report? Ms. Ratner.
As speaking like Addit said about the video, it seems that the seniors are in regards to Prevention Council, the Milford Prevention Council, and creating their own YouTube. And actually, I think it's called TED Talks, Student TED Talks in regard to safety and being careful about all kinds of things that should not be entered into the body.
Thank you. Any other, um, any other liaison reports? Ms. Petrowski.
Hi, yes, the, I don't think this is probably news to anybody, but the Milford Planning and Zoning has approved the Metrostar development efforts for downtown. It's estimated to take a fourteen-month build time. I'm not exactly sure when it's going to physically start, but we should see about seventy-five apartments. I don't know how much that will affect the, the enrollment, but it will have some effect on it.
Anyone else with liaison reports? Okay, seeing none. Just an item of correction, please, Ms. Ms. Griffin just informed me that the committee of the whole meeting is on the twenty-ninth of September because the twenty-eighth is a holiday. Okay, so moving on, we will turn the meeting over to Dr. Kutaia.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon, and thank you to the board and the many administrators in our meeting this evening. I will give a brief overview of the start of our school year and then turn things over to Dr. Fedigan, who has our first instructional highlight of the year focused on curriculum. So, while a unique start, I want to comfort the board, and maybe you read about this in the newspaper, we had a really solid, similar start to many other years. And what I shared with media and I think was picked up on, and I want to just underscore over and over that our community, our school community, really shined in the area of culture and climate and relationships. That if we could have hugged, there would have been a lot of hugging going on. But we can't because of social distancing. But the whole feeling of a reunion, a coming back together to see people that you have not seen in six months, who have missed tremendously, was pervasive throughout fourteen of our schools. I just want the board to know that while it was a difficult ramp-up as far as making sure to get everything in place, and there were people who worked so hard and are likely exhausted the morning of Tuesday, September eighth, but still had on their first day of school best and the heart that was expressed. While there were many jitters and nerves, very much like first day of school. It really felt like the first day of school in Milford Public Schools. So, just want to start off with that. You would hear many of the things that I reported in the last couple of years and superintendents before me, that Pat Bradbury and his team worked all throughout the weekend to make sure we were ready. Now, he just had an extra day because it was Labor Day weekend. I'm sure he and his team were very thankful for that. Making sure that our facilities, our buildings were ready with additional stuff this year, right? It's not, wasn't just the cleaning and the waxing of floors. Was certainly was the plexi was up on every teacher's desk and the striping and the signage was ready and everything spotless and disinfected and ready for all of our adults and young people. So, kudos to Mr. Bradbury and his team who worked tirelessly to make sure that our facilities were ready. I know the nightmare of any director of human resources is we'll wake up the first day of school and there won't be an adult in the room. And this year, I think, was even more frightening, Ms. Kapazna, right? To make sure we had an adult in every room because we had, we needed additional bodies, many, many more so than ever before. Just not in the form of a certified teacher, but also making sure we had enough people to deliver lunch to our classrooms at the elementary level. Additional custodial hands to do extra cleaning and so on. So, our school year, good news, there was an adult in every classroom. So, no nightmare made true there. But we still do have some openings that we need to fill. Openings that would be helpful in the area like long-term substitutes, et cetera. In the area of technology, I know that we were very well poised last year when we went to distance learning. And we are, we were even better ready on September eighth thanks to our incredible IT department led by three fantastic directors, Mr. John Cola. Of course, I'm not remembering who it was, Jeff Sibley and Garrett. Fill in the blank, Garrett. Somebody help me out.
Garrett Clark.
Thank you, Clark. And our entire team of technicians out and about in classrooms. And yes, day one was a little bumpy with everyone being online, of course. We're always going to run into tech problems, right? And it didn't help that at ten-thirty that morning, the Google Drive decided to crash. Not Milford problem, but a general problem of the drive crashing. But it's like having a snow day, right? It's an internet outage day. But hopefully, it wasn't the, thankfully, it wasn't the whole day. We did start with a new help desk app. I don't know, the board will remember that last year, moving away from a position in the district toward instructional technology support position, we also committed to implementing a new app in our system so that it was very easy for adults in the school district to immediately let IT know that they needed tech help. So, that launched at the beginning of the school year. We also launched a year with a new digital orientation since parents and students could not come into our building. Thanks to our IT department and our communications coordinator, Ms. Benetti, they put their heads together in their effort to make sure that every school had a personalized digital orientation. We did have to order extra Chromebooks because the exchange of kids coming back and needing a new one because of repair or damage. So, there are Chromebooks in all of our students' hands. There were a pool of students whose families didn't realize they needed a Chromebook or didn't realize it wasn't working. So, there was a last-minute mad rush to get Chromebooks into kids' hands. But obviously, you would never know it because our team is just so professional about it. We were able to attain some hotspots through some state funding in partnership with the state. So, we have hotspots for families, particularly on long-distance learning days that don't have easy access to the internet. They are, we are providing them with hotspots. And we were able to provide all of our adults with wireless Bluetooth headsets. So, when students are live streaming in, our students can easily hear and our adults can easily hear our students in the interaction on live streaming days. Well, most of our teaching and learning department is online tonight. So, this is a great opportunity for me to give a big round of applause to all of the incredible work that was done over the summer in preparation for day one because you just don't show up after being out of the school building for six months just to a regular curriculum. And Ms. Dr. Fedigan will go into that more deeply. But there was a lot of time spent this summer in probably schizophrenic work, right? Accelerated curriculum writing and regular curriculum writing. And then there was extra time spent on laying out some SEL pieces to ensure that our students are coming back to a safety net and in an environment where they felt like they were safe to talk about their experience the last six months. And our kids were able to jump right into the academics. I'll tell you, Dr. Fedigan and I have been to all of our school buildings and it looks like we never left in the area academics. They have jumped right in. In the area of transportation, we are running sixty-three buses this year, a hundred forty-six bus runs, and over a thousand school bus stops. Mr. Richatelli will give you a more detailed transportation update in the coming months. But know that transportation, transporting students this year is like no other year. We had to completely revamp our protocols as simple as how to get on a bus and pick out a seat. It was completely changed. So, really thankful to our transportation department. Our ridership did start out lower on day one. But an interesting phenomena, the ridership is increasing. We are having more families reach out to us and request their kid's spot on the bus back, which we're thankful because we quite frankly had traffic nightmares at our schools, particularly our elementary and middle schools. Our bus, our school campuses are not built to handle that many cars. So, a big thank you to Milford families for being so patient in the bus drop, I mean, the car drop-off and pickup lines. We are hoping that that process becomes more and more smooth and wait time becomes smaller and smaller. We did institute new protocols to help like a numbering system for the elementary students. So, I think as time goes along, we'll see that become much more efficient and better to maneuver. We do have bus monitors on our elementary buses. We did not have enough adult bodies on middle school and high school. We felt like the high schoolers, we weren't going to put bus aids on anyway. But the middle schools, we would have preferred to put an adult on. But we went to every stakeholder group we had internally, powers, food service people, cafeteria workers, all stepped up from all three of those pools of people. And we have those individuals extending their workday to help by being bus monitors for the elementary students. It didn't help that a tropical storm came through town and caused a little bit of havoc for Mr. Bradbury's team. In fact, we had extra tree work at eight of fourteen of our schools. So, do want the board and the community to know that that just adds another layer of getting ready for school. Incredible heart of gratefulness to the food service department led by Ms. Fostich. They served seventy-seven thousand one hundred fifty meals this summer. I'm going to say that again, seventy-seven thousand one hundred fifty meals to Milford students. You know that, we all know as educators that we can't take care of kids' minds and hearts unless they're bellies are full. And we will continue to feed young people. We are, as I mentioned to the board and I'll say publicly, we are able to provide free breakfast and lunch to all of our students through a special grant that we received at least through December thirty-first. And we plan to also provide for young people in distance learning and then on Wednesdays for our, all of our students who are learning from home. So, those details will go out to our community soon. Lunch does not look like it used to when we were kids. We're no longer walking through with a tray and asking for this or that or that. It is all individually wrapped in a grab-and-go and brown paper bag. And in some cases, the lunches are being delivered to our young people, particularly to our younger people. And there is a new online ordering system to make it, to expedite lunch orders and new software for parents to be able to put money in their account, which they don't need to do anymore because it's free. So, when we go back to paying for lunches, that new software system will come in handy. And finally, in the area of safety, Mr. Nielsen and has just really stepped up to help facilitate and coordinate all the new pieces of safety and security, particularly in the area of protocols for everything we do in our schools. The institution of isolation rooms as required by the state is fully functioning in each one of our buildings. Traffic control, car tagging systems, signage, floor decals, everything that we needed to start school safely in a pandemic, Mr. Nielsen led with us as a team. On top of providing annual required training, which can't just be dismissed. And finally, as Mr. Fowler mentioned, we are almost done with our five Core and Vestibule Projects at Law, Orchard Hills, Meadowside, the Academy, and Harborside Middle School. So, a big, big thank you to our entire team. Things like this don't get done well in a safe way, in a successful way, if it isn't all hands on deck. And that is exactly what happened in Milford Public Schools. So, I'm happy to take questions from the board about our restart.
Board members. Dr. Kutaia, I did want to ask about the free breakfast and lunch. Do parents have to take any action for that? Or do they have to let food services know? Or is there some?
We are putting out a survey to our families. I'm not sure, Dr. Fedigan, if that's gone out yet or Mr. Richatelli. I know that was being worked on on Friday. It's out.
Yes.
And those families. Go ahead. Sorry.
No, I was going to say that the families, families will have the opportunity to let us know whether they want to participate or not. But whether they do or they don't, the meals will be, will be provided for free. The one thing that I just would like to, that's the, it's the the nutritional meal that's provided by the, the state and the federal government. There is still à la carte that students can buy. They can order things. So, they still can have their cards and there can be money on it. But it's, it really is a great thing that, you know, that we're able to take advantage of this, you know, so that at this, at the time when families that may not be free or reduced but are still experiencing difficulties because of everything COVID can really take advantage of this. So, we're grateful for that.
Did hear from more than a thousand families this weekend already.
Wow, very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Kutaia from board members? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to item two under your report. Yes, Dr. Fedigan.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kutaia. Good evening, members of the board. Mrs. Glennon and members of the board, I'm so thrilled to have with us tonight our Teaching and Learning Division. We have our seven instructional supervisors on the general ed side and also our three instructional supervisors. Our Director of People Personnel Services, Chris Brown. So, I'm so excited, and I know they are too, to share with you the work that took place this summer. And I have to tell you, I don't know how really they accomplished what they did, to be honest. Our work in the Teaching and Learning Division really takes off in the summer. People wonder what happens in the school system. Their work in central office really ramps up in the way of curriculum, instruction, assessment planning, and professional learning. And we did move forward with all of the work that we had outlined in November and June that we had planned, our regularly scheduled program. And then on top of it, they were writing curriculum with their teams of teachers, their guiding coalitions in all of their departments. And it's really tremendous what they've accomplished. So, I'm going to give a broad overview now and then they're going to dig in and share with you a little bit about each of their departments. I'm going to share my screen with you. Well, Blessing, can you allow me to share my screen? I think I need your special permission.
You have, you have access.
Okay, here, here, it lets me come now. I'm not sure.
I see it.
Yeah. Okay. I can't, you can see my, the screen that says Milford Instructional Supervisors, yes? You're all on it? Okay, great. Fantastic. Okay, so we have a three-part presentation for you all tonight. The first part is to anchor back to our core curriculum work. This is, I'll share with you again, much of what I shared with you during our June eighth board meeting, our curriculum highlight from that evening. The second part that we want to discuss is what the research says about remediation and acceleration. That really has to do with the decision, what helps us make our decisions for the restart, which is the third part of our presentation tonight, how we prioritize curriculum and how we prepared for our restart. You'll remember that we have some systems and structures in place in Milford Public Schools that we've built so that we can have a coherent system from a teaching and learning perspective. One of those things is our curriculum vision statement. So, you remember, you've seen this several times. Every time we talk about curriculum in Milford Public Schools, whether it's with you, all of our Board of Education members, certainly with our teaching staff, we just want to remind everyone that when we're talking about curriculum, it is those assured experiences that connect to our Milford Public Schools' vision of the learner and also with regard to our high-quality instruction, our model for high-quality instruction. So, the curriculum really establishes the what, and the model for high-quality instruction is how we implement that curriculum. You'll remember in the past, and you saw this most recently in June, we shared with you that we do have a curriculum revision cycle. It's a seven-year cycle. And the instructional supervisors, when they're sharing tonight, they'll share with you where they, where they are in their work relative to this cycle and the curriculum revision calendar that we have built so that we can really pace the work of curriculum and instructional supports as well as professional learning in each of the departments that happen across our system pre-K twelve. And structures like this, our curriculum vision statement, our curriculum revision cycle, and our curriculum revision calendar help us to stay together in the work as a Teaching and Learning Department across our fourteen schools, pre-K twelve, and across all of the different departments. You remember in June, we talked about our curriculum revision calendar. There is a code or a key, a legend at the top. You can see that we, we really, in the, in the twenty-twenty-one school year, were set to write some curriculum implementation guides. You remember that very recently, Dr. Nobley and Mrs. Swanson shared with you their work early, the very early spring in the way of writing curriculum maps. So, they'll connect with you tonight as they, as they'll anchor back to what they previously shared in their presentation as well as you may recall that Beth Morrow and Jim Messina shared with you recently on their work envisioning our literacy pre-K twelve work with regard to our curriculum plan. So, we're going to start, I'm going to turn it over to each of the instructional supervisors. We're going to talk about with this core programming for Teaching and Learning Division, making sure that we have systems and structures in place to support coherence, what was the work that we accomplished this summer? You'll remember that when we met with you in June, I shared that we had developed like a course offering or a professional learning guide. So, our work this summer, we had to switch really quickly to support our adult learners. Remember, our adult learners had just shifted very quickly to becoming teachers of distance learning. March, April, May, June. I was astounded, and I think the instructional supervisors will tell you the same. We had significant engagement on the part of our teachers. And I think this is a testament to our instructional supervisors on the regular ed and special ed side, our building administrators, and their work to lead and facilitate curriculum, curriculum writing, curriculum revision, and alignment to instructional practices. And remember, this was all done remotely. So, it was quite a shift, not only for, for supporting distance learning with our students, but learning in a way of professional learning with the adult learners in our community, our staff. So, you'll remember that we did talk about how when we write curriculum and when we do curriculum work in the way of professional learning, we connect to the model for high-quality instruction. This is probably the most rich professional learning we can offer to our staff. So, the instructional supervisors worked with the curriculum writing teams to really dig deep into the standards and to, to think again about curriculum revision that was on our schedule and also how we could prioritize the standards so that we could really use our time wisely with staff and students when we come back to school this fall. I'm going to turn it over right now to Mr. Messina and Ms. Morrow. Remember, Ms. Morrow is our pre-K five humanities supervisor and Mr. Messina takes up six twelve humanities. And then after they're finished, they'll turn it over to their colleagues and we'll move through the departments. First, talking about our core curriculum work that took place this summer.
Good evening, members of the board. As Dr. Fedigan mentioned, my name is Bethany Morrow. I am the instructional supervisor pre-K to five of humanities. It was a tremendous summer and I want to take an opportunity to thank our amazing teams. After lifting distance learning from pre-K to five, we then had amazing teams that came together to write over the summer. So, our wonderful literacy coaching staff did a tremendous amount of work. We had K through five teachers who also did an amazing amount of work as well as our newly-formed world language team. So, I am incredibly grateful to each of those players for helping out this summer. After a long spring, they were all ready and willing to jump on board. So, as Dr. Fedigan mentioned, we did go ahead with what we had discussed last year in terms of curriculum writing for our core. We focused in particular on the K-two curriculum maps around literacy. We talked last spring about the fact that we won't, wouldn't focus on reading and/or writing, excuse me. Instead, we're looking at K-two as a literacy approach. We also worked on year-two acquisition for grade two that was tied to the C-three frameworks with our world language team. We worked with our student development and wellness team to align some of our literacy work with some of the equity work that was happening. We also worked on some formative assessment planning as well as the beginning stages of aligning social studies and literacy. I'm going to turn it over to my counterpart, Jim Messina.
Thank you, Bethany. So, I'm very proud again to echo the comments that were just made about having an amazing team. So, incredible leaders from the middle and high school teams that came together. And so, we were able to accomplish some preliminary curriculum mapping in our sixth through eighth grade English Language Arts curriculum and our nine-twelve English curriculum with teams of literacy coaches and curriculum leaders at the middle school and our department leaders and members of the English department at the high schools. And it was just wonderful work to begin to be excited and energized by the work ahead. We were also able to accomplish some vertical articulation. I was very glad that we were able to bring our middle and high school social studies teams together to talk about the college career and civic life standards. to talk about the college career and civic life standards, and how that is going to help us shape student experiences across all six of our middle and high school campuses. And so we continue with our world language team, as Bethany mentioned, looking at some revision and organization of our middle school resources to make sure that they were able to start the year with strength. And across all of the humanities disciplines, we look for opportunities to teach about cultural diversity, the history of racism, and the need for equity and social justice in Milford Public Schools. And so that is something that was a very clear message that came across from the voices that we heard from our students at the end of this school year. And so we looked for opportunities within our existing curriculum and places where we could do some revising. And so we are very excited by the work ahead. And I'm going to now turn it over to our STEM colleagues, Dr. Nobley and Mrs. Swanson.
Can I just interrupt for one second and ask Ms. Morrow, can you explain for board members that might not know what a formative assessment is?
Sure, I actually appreciate the opportunity because I realized I forgot to thank our intervention team who did a lot of work on that. So the idea is that we felt it was very important in light of COVID and a variety of just general practices that we don't want to have kids walk in the door and say, here's your assessment calendar. So we're working really hard to help teachers understand ways that they can less formally assess students. And we'll have some examples on our Teaching and Learning website, which you guys can see a little bit later.
Dr. Nobley, I was assuming you were going to go first, but I'm happy to go first if necessary.
No, I'll go first. It's okay. We'll go in grade order, right? Good evening, board and members of the public. I'm Dr. Nobley, the instructional supervisor for pre-K by STEM. Again, just like my colleagues, I want to thank the teachers and coaches that worked on this core curriculum work and eventually some of our prioritizing work about later. But again, really dedicated themselves about the summers. This was a really heavy lift, and it was a lot of time and effort. So again, I want to thank those teachers and coaches for that. So in the area of mathematics, Ms. Morrow had talked about working in the K to five. So we wrote curriculum maps for grade three to five in mathematics, which was a part of our regularly scheduled plan as well. So those were finalized, and that'll lead into some implementation guide work later on. Also, as Dr. Fedigan mentioned, we, myself and Miss Swanson spoke in the spring about our work in science. So over the summer, we finalized all of our curriculum maps, pre-K to five, and then began the work of using those curriculum maps as a framework to begin to develop science implementation guides for those units. And we completed implementation guides for the launch units, and are still working on some of the other units throughout the year. So again, the two main projects, core projects, were completing our pre-K five STEM mathematics curriculum maps, and then finalizing our science maps and beginning work on the implementation guys. I'll turn it over to my secondary colleague, Miss Swanson, to talk about work at the middle and high school.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Tom, for introducing some of our pivotal work this summer. I am very excited to share a brief summary. But like my colleagues, I cannot miss this opportunity to publicly thank the many teams that worked so hard this summer. As Dr. Fedigan said, coming off of what really was a rigorous spring and then being willing to engage starting June 13th, the day after students were exited, I say that in quotes, from school. And really, I had 13 teams of teachers working on reshaping our curriculum in science. And they've really begun with this pivotal work for the district. And I know we have many exciting things to come out of that work. So we did spend some time reorganizing our middle school curriculum, which really was discipline-based. So they learned earth science one year and physical science another year, to really thinking of an interdisciplinary science approach for our middle school teams, which aligns to what was already being done in our high schools. In addition to that, they developed then curriculum maps to represent all of the work that would be achieved in our, all our courses from grade six through 12th grade. This was, the conversations were really rich and at times certainly uncomfortable because, you know, there's strong beliefs, there's strong practices, and shifting of material that people have been teaching for years. But they really, in the end, were so proud of the work that they pulled together. Then, once we settled on a map of what a year would look like, they dug in and started creating rigorous science implementation guides, which really articulate the lesson sequence that teachers will be using to support their instruction. That's such a brief summary. I just don't feel like it's enough, really, to honestly represent the tremendous amount of work. We had teachers working from June all the way through to the last week before school started. And I am so excited that it's all begun, and teachers are already digging in, and students are already looking at some really neat phenomena. Thank you. I'm going to now turn this over to my colleagues in student development and wellness, Sean Smith and Annalise Spaziano.
Thanks, Miss Swanson. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board members. It's great to see everybody again. Same as my colleagues, I really need to give kudos to all the awesome teacher teams I got together over the summer. I'm in awe when I work with them. They're just so dedicated and so bright. You get them together and just magic happens. So I'm super grateful for them. We started the summer with a health program review, myself, a teacher from every grade level, a PE teacher who's health certified, a teacher leader, and the director of nursing from the health department. We got together, we looked at our health curriculum at the elementary level, and we compared it to the new state standard that just came out in January 2020. And we looked for where we were meeting the standards and areas for growth. You know, the bottom line is we do quite a bit, but we want to do more and be more systemic about it. The next step there is to run some pilots and do some curriculum maps in the area of health instruction at the elementary level. In terms of SEL, it was a big year for SEL, or a big summer for SEL, I should say. We had every intention of revising the current SEL curriculum. The pre-K three curriculum is two years old, and the four or five curriculum is only one year old going into the summer. So it was certainly ripe for revision and tweaking. However, a few weeks before we got together, the George Floyd incident happened. And, you know, we looked at that, and we decided as a team that it was really our responsibility to address race equity and social justice within that curriculum. So we still revised the SEL curriculum, but we did it through the lens of race equity and social justice. We started with the core. You know, we have an SEL framework that guides our SEL work at the elementary level, all across districts, actually. And we changed the language in that framework to reflect race equity and social justice so that future changes are changed at the core. And we also developed lessons and a curriculum for the year, pre-K through five, around that. And I think we're going to talk more about that in the near future, so I won't go into too much detail. But that's an overview of that. In addition, we really focused on distance learning addendums for all the SEL work. So when the teachers are home on Wednesdays or other days during, you know, potential tier two or tier three situation, some things translate really well when you're home teaching remotely, and some things don't translate that well. So we really focused on developing some ideas and resources for teachers when they are home teaching remotely so they can continue that good SEL work from home. And I'll turn it over to my partner, Annalise Spaziano.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, everybody. I'm really pleased to be here this evening to share some of the wonderful work that the student development and wellness staff at the secondary level came together to complete. And I know everyone's been saying it, but I have to say it too. And you'll see in just a second how amazing these staff members are. And, you know, coming off a year like we did last spring, coming together, I have to say that I think this opportunity has really brought us together as a team and has built, you know, it's really helped us set a foundation that if we can get through this, we really can do anything together. And we really utilized that in our favor this summer. I'll also say that some of the shifts in terms of being able to work from home this summer actually increased the number of different staff members who were involved in the curriculum writing because there was some flexibility for them on when and where they could do it. So typically, if a teacher had some childcare issues over the summer who wanted to participate but just couldn't, we were able to increase the amount of participation from a variety of staff, and that was really wonderful to see this summer. So for us, in the way of secondary student development and wellness, we really had a very big lift in health and PE. We shifted from a content-based standards curriculum to a skills-based curriculum. So we developed curriculum maps, grade six through 12, for health and PE. And for the first time in Milford, I'm really proud to say that all students will receive health and PE every year, grade six through 12. We know how essential this content area is to the growth and development of our students, and we now have a vertical articulation of that programming for all secondary students. We also took the opportunity to crosswalk our curriculum with the SEL vertical framework that we've developed a few years ago. So you'll see a very, very strong social-emotional presence at each grade level. And for our school counseling department, although we set out to do some curriculum writing very early on through some, just some self-awareness and self-reflection, we realized that we needed to take a step back and really think about who are we as a school counseling department? So we did take some time this summer to dive into our mission, vision, and belief statements. But what I'd like to do is provide you with an opportunity to actually hear from the teachers who are involved in this work this summer. And I really want you to listen to what you'll hear. Try to think, try to listen to some themes that come out as the teachers share about their experience this summer.
Hi, members of the Milford Board of Ed. My name is Ian Kirkpatrick, and I teach physical education at East Shore Middle School.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kevin Maruza. I'm a health and PE teacher at John F. Mall High School.
Hi, my name is Jen Zanuck. I'm the director of school health at John F. Mall High School.
Hi, my name is Kathy Gannan. I'm currently a PE teacher at Ford High School.
I can speak for all my colleagues by saying we're excited and eager to implement this new curriculum into our physical education program.
This summer, I had a blast collaborating and working with my colleagues from law, and we created a new curriculum. We looked at the new Connecticut State Standards and the social-emotional learning standards, and incorporated those standards into our new curriculum.
I'm also really excited about the new training and nutrition for athletic performance. It's a great elective. I was able to write the curriculum with other colleagues and now teaching it. So really excited about that course as well.
This summer, the school counselors came together to create curriculum. But we realized early on that we needed to stop and take a step back. We needed to create our beliefs, our vision, our mission. And so that's what we did. We created belief statements that we can stand by. We created a vision and a mission that we believe in. That was probably the most exciting thing that came out of this summer was every single school counselor involved was energized. We were renewed, and we became excited about the work that would be coming up next year, too.
Thank you for your time, and we're looking forward to a great school year.
So as you can see, I'm hoping you're seeing some of the same themes I'm seeing. And that, I know that Dr. Fedigan referred to the curriculum writing process as a real professional learning experience, but it is an invigorating experience for teachers. I hear the, I mean, I just gave you snippets of what teachers shared with me, but over and over again, they shared how excited they were for the work, how psyched they were to collaborate, feeling rejuvenated and having a sense of purpose. This is what curriculum writing does for our teachers. And so I'm just so grateful to the board that you support the process, you support us in working with our teachers over the summer because it really does help to set us up for successful school years, again, time and time again. So thank you. And I will now turn it over to my colleague, Ms. Paris, to share out in her department area.
Thank you, Ms. Spaziano, and members of the board, thank you for supporting the work that our colleagues have presented tonight as well. Like my colleagues before me, I want to thank our team of music, art, and library media teachers who did some curriculum work with us this summer. We have a big lift happening in music, art, and library media, where we are rewriting the entire pre-K through 12 curriculum in all three of these areas. And we took that approach for many reasons. I think the biggest reason is the ability to write it together allows us to find connections between music, art, and library media, where our music and art teachers or our library teachers can work together to find those cross-curricular connections. Our teams represented all three disciplines and grade levels and worked both at each level and each discipline, but also they worked vertically so that they could ensure that we created an engaging and assured, engaging and assured experiences in music, art, and library media for our students. So this summer, we started our pre-K through 12 curriculum mapping work in music, art, and library media. We worked on a vertical alignment of our instrumental and choral music programs, four through 12. So that's an example of a team that wasn't just an elementary, a middle, and a high school team. That was a team of teachers who work with our students, grades four through 12, so that our instrumental and our choral programs have a really clear consistency in, so that our fourth graders, we know where they're going by the time they reach our high school programs. Our elementary music curriculum, we are really working to align it across the district because we do have some, we haven't had consistency. And so the approach we're taking actually not only allows for our students to engage in musical literacy, but also in reading literacy. So there's a lot of components of rhyming and the early word and literacy language skills that our students need to be great readers, and it also allows them to be great musicians as well. Our art curriculum, our art team did a great job in looking at the different approaches that we could have, especially at the elementary level. And they're doing, they're balancing a student and a center's approach with teacher-led lessons that focus on the elements of art and principles of design. And this approach will allow for student agency, but also some more guided approaches when our students need to learn a new skill that really does need to be taught for our artists. And then finally, our pre-K six library media curriculum not only focuses on digital literacy, but also digital citizenship, which we can all agree in the time of COVID, became very, very important for all of our learners. So that curriculum, pre-K through six, prepares our students to be digital citizens and understand the importance of what their digital footprint looks like. And I think at this time, I'm turning it back over to Dr. Fedigan.
Thank you, team. So I want to point out, in addition to the leadership and the facilitation of the instructional supervisors who just shared, we know it's really important to have our special education colleagues around the table and in the room when we're engaging in this work because we're planning for all of our students, all students in Milford Public Schools in the core. So I want to thank also, in addition to our seven colleagues who just shared, Mr. Brown and his team, and also the building administrators who participate in these curriculum writing and professional learning sessions so that we can make sure that that assured curriculum that the instructional supervisors we're speaking of becomes the implemented curriculum, the experienced curriculum for our students. So you remember at the beginning of tonight, we talked about wanting to share three levels of the work. So the systems and structures that we put in place for coherence with regard to teaching and learning, especially in the area of curriculum across our 14 schools, pre-K 12, and across all of the departments. We also want to go next to this idea of remediation versus acceleration. And you might remember that in June, we talked about, you know, we cannot ignore that we've just missed several months of school while our teachers and leaders made great shifts in their work to support distance learning. It was a very quick shift, and there were challenges along the way. And certainly, nothing will ever replace being in a classroom with teachers and peers together. So we know that there was some loss, and Dr. Kutaia has used some verbiage like educational recovery. We have to plan for educational recovery. And we know there is tremendous research beyond even the COVID-19 impacts. There's tremendous research on remediation versus acceleration. And we know that we can't just look back to from March. And we know that we can't just look back to from March on and say, well, we're going to replace a grade and a half. Dr. Katia has said before, you know, we're not going to pretend that we have students that are at first grade and a third, or first grade and two-thirds, and make up for that lost time. We really need to move to a model of acceleration so that we're using our time very wisely. We had parents, when Dr. Katia was hosting the parent liaison groups, who were asking questions around the idea of curriculum planning and prioritizing curriculum. How will we make sure that we're making every minute count with our students, that we're realizing that one of the most important standards to address and how to lift all children to get there? So you can read these bullets, but in summary, the research is really very clear on this point. It is incredibly important that our teachers have had these rich opportunities this summer to engage in this core curriculum work, because we know it is critically important for students to begin the year at grade level, with grade-level content and with access to rigorous curriculum and instruction. It's most important to think about the depth of instruction rather than the pace, so to go deeply with our students. We have to prioritize content within the work. I spoke about this earlier, and I just did actually again with our PPS supervisors being here in the room with us. We have to think about the inclusion of each and every learner within our core programming for curriculum. Ms. Morrow talked in her comments about formative assessment, and what she was talking about there is really this work of identifying any gaps in learning through assessment, not really through a standardized measure, but in-the-moment assessment that can help us know where a student is, and most importantly, what to do next with them in their learning trajectory. So that's critically important. We also have to think about the commonalities that students share. We've all, all of our students have experienced some level of trauma, and our staff as well with schools closing. So really prioritizing social-emotional learning, as Mr. Smith and Mrs. Fazio spoke of, is critically important. And you know, as a school system, our most significant strategy for district improvement and the way of teaching and learning is this model of high-quality instruction. And these elements, really here, what the research says about acceleration, all indicate different tenants of that model of high-quality instruction. So the good work that happened this summer with core curriculum, coupled with the work to prioritize curriculum standards, really are all very deeply rooted and anchored in the model for high-quality instruction. I know we talk a lot about this. What's the connection between curriculum and instruction? I think you can see it in some of these points. The instructional supervisors are going to share with you now their work outside of the core curriculum, the work that they engaged and then led this summer with their different departments and their guiding coalitions in all of these curricular areas to accelerate the learning for our students. So again, that we're being mindful of the time that was lost, we're meeting students where they are, and really helping to move them forward along the trajectory of the standards. We thought that this graphic would help the board. In addition, we did use this graphic with our teams of staff this summer, who met for these professional learning experiences, and I agree with Ms. Fazio, there was great energy in the work. The format, you would think that they would be tired of Google Meet by June, but we saw great evidence of them digging in and working together in a collaborative way with great flexibility to accomplish wonderful things. We did work on both of these tracks this summer, writing the core curriculum and the prioritized curriculum. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to each of the instructional supervisor teams again, so that they can share out the work of prioritizing to be ready to meet the needs of our learners and to really accelerate and move learning forward at a healthy pace for our students. So we're going to start with humanities, our pre-K 12 humanities team, Ms. Morrow and Mr. Messina.
Good evening again, members of the board. So in order to start this educational recovery or prioritization work, we felt it was really important to make sure we identified not only standards, but also a vision of where we were going. We also felt that vision needed to be anchored in the vision of what we had presented earlier to you in the spring. So we knew that in order to prioritize standards, we had to make sure we were grounded in what we were already doing. So when we looked particularly at the pre-K to five standards, we made sure to look at them as literacy. So we incorporated foundational skills, reading fiction, reading nonfiction, and writing skills. We wanted to make sure those standards were prioritized throughout the year. We then chunked the year into eight-week timeframes and tied the standards to both the current Milford units of study and also those units that you graciously supported us vetting last year. So we wanted to continue the work to move forward and make sure that we were moving the districts forward, but also making sure we were tying to the work that had already been, had already been there. We also made sure in K five to align resources to both social studies and to talk through ongoing professional learning. We have been talking about how we'll strategically lay this out. We've been presenting it to teachers and talking through their feedback as we go through each one of these eight-week cycles. As Dr. Fedigan mentioned, in all that we do, we are always aligned to the vision of the learner and model for high-quality instruction. We want to make sure our children have the best experiences, and I'm going to send this on our partner, Ms. Messina.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow, and thank you to the board once again. And so with our six-12 team, it was very important that we see that these prioritized standards that we identified were a shared responsibility. And so our ELA teachers, our social studies teachers, and our world language teachers all have a sense that they have an important part to play. And so Ms. Morrow and I were able to speak with and receive messages from some members of our team, and their work and reflection, as I said before, really highlighted how excited and energized our teams were. And so I don't want to read the entire quotes, the quotes in their entirety to you, but to see that members of our team saw an upward trajectory, that they have an exciting foundation upon which to build. And so they were very excited to see standards that were prioritized and then resources that were aligned to those priority standards. And so the work that we began this summer, we recognize is going to be a great jumping off point for continued work throughout this very important school year. Students are coming back into classrooms excited to learn, and so we wanted to make sure that we are sending a clear message through our staff that students are there to focus on what is most important. And so, you know, as this final quote mentions, I think many teachers may have been a little nervous hearing about acceleration, but they knew that it was just good teaching. And the work that happened over the summer really created a firm foundation upon which they can launch to that great work across the humanities in our English, social studies, and world language classrooms. And now I'll turn it over once again to our STEM colleagues, Dr. Nobley and Mrs. Swanson.
Thank you, Mr. Messina. So in the area of pre-K five STEM, particularly in math, we developed, again, the team developed what we're calling accelerated learning guides, pre-K through five. So essentially, similar to the work that Mr. Messina and Ms. Morrow just described, our team looked at the standards in each grade level in mathematics and prioritized the major work of the grade. So really, the what do we really need to make sure that kids know all standards are important, but there are some that are really critical in that vertical progression. So how do we best utilize our time? And then, and then we also looked at, after identifying what we're teaching, looking a little bit of how we're going to do that. So in those accelerated learning guides, we included for teachers a breakdown of kind of what students need to know and be able to do within each of those groups of standards and kind of mapping out that learning trajectory for them to have, to plan with. We also looked at, one of the things that Dr. Fedigan talked about in an acceleration model is utilizing grade-level work to address any unfinished learning students might have or provide any just-in-time teaching. So we had, we put in a series of potential scaffolds that teachers could use with students who may be at various points in their learning, but in order to move them along successfully in the grade-level work. And then as Ms. Morrow and Dr. Fedigan talked about, we also included some formative assessment work in those guides, as well as some sample tasks for both hybrid and digital learning for students, for teachers to use with their students. The second point, one of the things that was also worked on that we'll be rolling out very soon is we created what we call getting to know you, formative interviews in mathematics. So again, instead of giving a traditional standardized assessment where kids, we're kind of basically coming in from a deficit standpoint, trying to figure out what kids don't know, the intent of this interview is really, it's a conversation with the student about the way they think and reason mathematically, to get to know them as a mathematician, and really focusing on what they do know and how we can use that to build on their learning throughout the year. So we're going to be doing some work with teachers in training them in how to implement and use those as resources. And then finally, in the area of science, as I mentioned earlier, we developed, you know, our launching units, our new implementation guides, but then had to go, we wrote those according to our kind of regular scheduled curriculum cycle. So we wrote them as in, there weren't necessarily restrictions on health and safety, but in this current climate, there are. So we went back and we made some modifications for, to make sure that the units could be implemented by following the current safety guidelines in terms of material sharing and things like that in science, so kids could still have that inquiry-based science experience but stay safe in doing it. So we gave teachers alternate resources and means, so when they're implementing, they have something to go off of. So that kind of highlights some of the prioritization work we did pre-K to five. And I'll now turn it over to Ms. Swanson to talk about work at the secondary level.
Thank you, Dr. Nobley. I think somebody mentioned earlier that the work at times felt schizophrenic this past summer, and what Dr. Nobley was just referring to really was one of those moments when we were designing our science curriculum. And then, you know, at the same time, everybody thinking, but this isn't going to be a regular school year, and there's going to be a lot of challenges. So then having to kind of go back through all those brand-new maps that everybody was excited about and then do some prioritization, which is similar to what also had to happen in the math curriculum that is already established. So we had middle school and high school teams come in, review, and revise our curriculum expectations to really focus on the priority standards. The good news about this work in many ways is that we're not the only ones doing this work. So our national organizations also help us with this work and produce some really great documents to help really identify if you have to make choices about what you can teach this upcoming year, where should you focus? And really use those as guides to then align that to our own curriculum. I'm really excited about the middle school work as I really challenge them to adhere to what really the state guidelines provided to us really recommended, which is that you really create a neutral introductory unit. And neutral being that you wouldn't expect students to have a background in that area, so that really all students are coming to the information on a very even playing field and not assuming that they had some prior knowledge in that area. So we really looked through our priority standards and looked for a launching unit that would really give students the opportunity to all learn new material that they wouldn't have a background in. And then that allows us to really scaffold in and look for those opportunities to assess our individual students' needs based on the grade-level skills. So really focusing on staying with our grade-level expectations, but having those opportunities within this unit that's launching in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to provide some really, you know, students a good opportunity to be happy to be back and engaged and not immediately put some students, you know, on their heels, feeling like, well, I didn't have the greatest, you know, I had challenges in the spring for a variety of reasons around learning some of the material, and now our teachers have an opportunity to kind of layer in where those needs are and begin to address that. We also took an opportunity to look at our common assessments. These are a lot of formative assessments that we all agreed to give as a team and really thought about when would be the best time to really be looking at those and utilizing those to help conform our instruction. Another significant challenge in the pandemic is definitely how do you teach an authentic tech program in our middle schools? So the team came together this summer to look at what we traditionally do, and knowing that we really wouldn't be allowed to use our saws and drills and things like that, and really think about that engineering component of our work and creating experiences that really give students the opportunity to figure things out and use their thinking skills to develop solutions. And of course, thinking about all of our Department of Public Health safety compliance to ensure that we are keeping our kiddos safe as well. So that's been challenging work, to say the least, but also very exciting work. And we have a little sample here from a couple of teachers that worked with Dr. Nobley this past summer for you.
Yeah, before, I'll just set it up before Dr. Fedigan hits play. So all I asked some of the team members, I just said, would you mind just recording some of your takeaways from the work we did this summer? These are all teachers and coaches that worked specifically on the math acceleration work. And so like Ms. Fazio, I had a lot of footage, because we had such great response and great commitment from our staff, so I put together a short highlights of some of their takeaways for us to hear. So there we go.
It was important that the teachers worked on this, and it will be extremely helpful to our classroom teachers. The scaffolding piece is a very important piece to this work, and we were in the classroom. So as we thought about if a student had difficulty with a certain concept, what would we do to help them understand it better? We were able to give many scaffolding ideas for teachers to use. And I think that it is important that the work on the math curriculum came from teachers who are in the classroom every day.
We really experienced firsthand high-quality professional development for ourselves.
Absolutely. And we were talking about it, and we were looking at kind of the work that we did, and, you know, thinking of that pencil drawing and working with Dr. Nobley, you know, it started off, and it was hard work.
Very hard.
We had to grapple, we had to struggle a little bit. And then through his feedback and his scaffolds, you know, the work slowly began to become a little easier, and we started to understand it more, and we started to be able to really engage in the work and working with a partner, help bouncing ideas off one another. And we were just saying at the end.
We didn't need as much support anymore.
We got it. We got it.
Through my experience this summer, I have developed a new understanding of remediation versus acceleration. Furthermore, maybe more so than ever before, accelerating learning for all students is crucial, and one key factor in doing so is delivering high-quality instruction while maintaining high expectations for students with the belief and vision that they can meet grade-level standards. Working to prioritize major mathematics work this summer has allowed me to think critically and deeply as an educator and a learner. I feel more so ready than ever, and as a result, I believe our students will feel that, too. Thanks.
Sorry, with that.
Turn it over now to our instructional supervisors of student development and wellness to talk about their work in the area of prioritizing curriculum standards.
Hey, hi again, everybody. So we felt it was vital to support our students and our teachers emotionally coming back to school after this long break due to COVID. And we decided the best way to do that at the elementary level was to revise the first six weeks of morning meeting. So for those of you who may not know, morning meeting is a deliberate approach from a responsive classroom that builds a caring and respectful learning community by having a meeting every morning with your whole class. And it has a greeting, it has a share, it has a group activity, and it has a morning message. And we had a document in district that was the first six weeks of morning meeting, but we decided that we were going to revise it specifically for this situation. And we had four goals in mind. So one goal was to target and accelerate the building of a classroom community, including the connections from student to student as well as student to teacher. Another goal was to give students the opportunity to share their thoughts and feelings about their experience during distance learning because of COVID-19 during the pandemic. A third goal was to help teachers facilitate morning meeting. If you can picture and visualize what morning meeting normally looks like, you know, there's a carpet in the classroom, and there's a bunch of small people sitting in a circle, shoulder to shoulder, knee to knee, and they're really coming together as a community. And in our new environment, we can't do that, right? We're six feet apart, we have masks on. So we wanted to come up with ideas and strategies for them to build the community in that new environment. And the fourth goal was to provide tips and resources for teachers to do morning meeting from home. And, you know, on Wednesdays, and in the event we're home in tier two or tier three, You know, on Wednesdays and in the event we're home in tier two or tier three, we want to make sure we continue to build that community from home. So we try to do this through the first six weeks of morning meeting. And Dr. Fedigan, if you could just flip to the next slide for a minute. Here's just one example of a modification. So a lot of the, one of the important parts of morning meeting is the greeting because it makes every student feel included and welcomed and celebrated to start the day. And, you know, the challenge with COVID is that a lot of the morning meeting activities have the kids physically connecting, giving high fives or a secret handshake. So here's just an example of a kindergarten modification where instead of an actual high five, you do a virtual high five. So the teacher might say, good morning, Annalise, it's great to see you and give you a virtual high five. And Annalise might respond, good morning, Mr. Smith, and she'll give me a virtual high five. So a simple modification, but to come up with these ideas and thoughts every day to change things is a challenge. So we did that for teachers to help them really build that community, whether they're home or in the classroom. You know, the share is another important part, for example. And, you know, a lot of the questions are things like, what's your favorite food to get to know people better? So we decided, like especially for the older students, to ask questions like, well, what are you most grateful for from distance learning? You know, asking questions like that to get them to talk about their experience during the pandemic. Thanks, Dr. Fedigan. You could flip back there. So aside from that, we also we adjusted the PE guidelines and resources to teach in this new environment. As you can imagine, teaching PE in the COVID environment is a real challenge, right? We were using their gym spaces for other purposes. They don't have their gyms and you need to do PE with your kids six feet apart. So we developed guidelines for that and found resources where they could have activities inside, have activities outside that would follow all the guidelines and keep kids safe. And we also, in partnership with PPS, developed a student SEL survey. In the elementary schools, the parents filled it out, but the idea was to to learn how the kids were feeling about coming back to school and about their experience during the pandemic. And to really identify the students that needed more support coming back into school. And after looking over the results of the survey, it really gave us some great information and really helped us target students who needed more support coming back into school. I'll turn it over to Ms. Baziano.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So I think you've heard a lot already in terms of what acceleration looks like in student development wellness at the secondary level. We did develop accelerated learning guides for health grades six through 12. As Mr. Smith had indicated, we came up with COVID specific guidelines for our physical education teachers. This included guidelines not only to keep everybody healthy and safety, but ideas of different games and activities that maintain that six feet spacing while still getting students up and actively engaged and providing an opportunity for them to have some fun and take their masks off while they're outside. As Mr. Smith said, we did an SEL student survey at the secondary level. This was a self-report survey that we collaborated with with Mr. Brown on in terms of its development and the first four days that teachers were back before school, we actually dove into that data. There was a question on the survey that asked students whether or not they wanted to talk to somebody before school started. And we really felt that was a great opportunity to have a school counselor or support staff to reach out to the student specifically and touch base with them to address any concerns that they might have in returning to school. And I actually got an email from one of the school counselors at the middle school level who said she had reached out to six students who had responded, they wanted to talk to somebody before school started and what a difference it made on their first day. So I think it was little things like that that really made the difference for our students in transitioning back to school. We had a middle school and high school advisory committee to come together and design specific advisory lessons to to really align specifically to help students transition back to school, knowing they had been out since March and that there might be some anxiousness and anxiety and transitioning back. We actually had students, we vetted those lessons through our high school students to see how they felt about them and whether or not they thought it would be useful. And we got really a lot of great feedback from them. We also developed some advisory lessons on race equity and social justice, but I'm going to share that until later because I know we're coming back to share out to the board. So you'll learn a little bit more about those in particular. At one of, I think it's a board meeting in October that's coming up. Again, we looked at different supplemental resources that could be utilized knowing that there's just some things that we won't be able to do as a result of the restrictions of using equipment in our content area. Also, in the middle school level, we developed homeroom guidelines because there's an extended homeroom for both middle school and high school this year. And so, you know, it sounds kind of silly, but that space and time with our secondary students is really a great opportunity to build relationships. So we just compiled, similar to actually what Mr. Smith was referring to with regards to the morning meeting resources, we did something similar for homeroom at the secondary level, something that teachers can use to help engage students on a sort of low level way to help build relationships and work on developing those connections both between students and between the student and the teacher. And lastly, I know it's not on in here, but I think it's really important to mention that also during one of those first four days before coming back to school, we did a professional learning session on the compassionate classroom. So it was an hour long professional learning opportunity for teachers that sort of explained to them the impact that trauma can have on the development of the brain for our secondary students and how that might play out in the way of behavior in the classroom. And then also what strategies can teachers use to help minimize the impact that that might be having for students? So and then in addition to that, we provided them with an SEL professional learning choice board. So if they wanted to dive into a specific strategy, a little bit deeper, they can sort of pick and choose areas in which they wanted to learn more about and it was sort of a self-guided learning. And that choice board is now there for teachers to go back and revisit if and when they need it throughout the school year. We're hoping to build upon that as the year goes on. And I think at this point, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Paris.
Thank you very much, Ms. Baziano. So in music, art and library media, some of our work focused on ensuring that our students across pre K through eight had consistency in what they were learning in those subjects. We do encourage our teachers at all levels to go and look at, especially in the arts, to focus some of their work sometimes on where their strengths are. But we recognize that in our students not being and and having an in-person art and music experience, which is so hands-on, we wanted to ensure that our students across all levels do have that vertical, the consistency both vertically and horizontally with this. So we prioritized our standards in music, art and library media. And we coupled that with ongoing professional learning for all of our staff. And I think the big part of our work, especially in music and art, was using the state and national guidelines that and recommendations that were put out on both of those levels to develop a safe return to music and art for staff, but also for families so that they see the the safety protocols that we have in place in music and art in Milford Public Schools. And then finally, we're adjusting adjustment of our curriculum based on the current safety guidelines, especially in music and art, but also looking at our safety guidelines with library media as far as quarantining our books to make sure we can get materials into our students' hands in a safe manner. And I'll pass it back over to Dr. Fedigan.
I think everyone can can begin to appreciate the amazing scope and breadth of the work of the Teaching and Learning Department this this summer. And this again came on the heels of quickly transitioning to a distance learning platform, March through June, with a quick turnaround and thinking about how are we going to continue the pace of curriculum work? How are we going to appropriately think about restarting and prioritizing curriculum, focusing on SEL and also prioritizing issues of race equity and social justice within our curriculum so that we can do right by our students, staff and families and really prioritize our restart so that we're not wasting any time? And I'm thinking about the work that happened this summer that was led by this amazing team and the teams that they lead. And I can't help but think about Sydney Fielding's comments, Jess Affacella, those are two of our staff members from JFK. I can get a sense from their comments that there must have been some relief and almost confidence. This was, I think, confidence inducing. Although everybody had a crazy busy spring, I think diving into the work of core curriculum writing and engaging in professional learning helped to give us a strong foundation for the opening of this school year. You can see also that the work of not only the core curriculum, but prioritizing curriculum standards was a very rich professional learning exercise, but it was also, as I mentioned before, deeply rooted in this model for high quality instruction. And in fact, both Sydney Fielding mentioned that in her comments and Daniela Marquito talked about a vision of what all students will know and be able to do. And that's certainly manifested in our Milford Public Schools' vision of the learner. So it's really wonderful that despite the challenges of COVID-19 and the practicality of thinking, how do you run a PE class when you have to keep kids six feet apart? And what are the rules for having kids sing and perform music safely from a health department perspective? We were able to keep a very clear focus on our strategy for district improvement for teaching and learning, which is, of course, our model for high quality instruction toward this vision of the learner. We will continue this work obviously throughout the year. This team is working with building administration and of course, teacher leaders, informal teacher leaders as well, department heads and beyond to develop a strong professional learning program that will really be the foundation to support the work of core curriculum experience for staff and also the curriculum prioritization work that took place this summer. And that work will be ongoing and embedded. You know, that cycle of curriculum and curriculum revision has professional learning embedded throughout throughout the entire cycle. We recognize that it's critically important to support our adult learners in this work in an ongoing and embedded way. And also as Mr. Smith and Ms. Baziano referenced, really taking care of the needs of our staff also from a relationships and social emotional perspective. I won't go into all of the details and all of the other amazing things that this team accomplished this summer other than to tell you that in addition, we have built a professional learning Google site for our staff, which really serves as an online professional learning hub. It's a one-stop shopping kind of place for everyone on our Milford Public Schools team to access. I think it will pull up right now. When it does, you'll see that you can navigate in this this website all work that has to do with our curriculum. You can navigate by grade level and by department and access some of those other systems and structures that you've seen before as our board in the way of creating coherence across our school system from a teaching and learning perspective. So this is a place that we'll use to kind of be stay connected because again, while we're in person right right now with our students, our professional learning will continue to to be very robust and to take place through virtual platform. And so we want to make sure that we are facilitating that work in a streamlined by our staff and making these really key resources easy for our staff to get their hands on. And so we will take any questions that the board has now with regard to the amazing work that took place this summer. And I once again, I want to thank this team, Dr. Pataya, and I comment all of the time about how this is a really gifted, bright, warm and relationally focused group of leaders. And we're really, really proud and amazed, quite frankly, by what we've been able to accomplish as a Teaching and Learning Division through their leadership this year.
Dr. Fedigan, and thank you all for that incredibly informative and rich and deep presentation. It's been a long time since the board has been able to meet with you all. So I personally appreciated being able to see you and having you share all the incredible work you've done over the summer. Do we have questions from board members? Mr. Palowski? Where'd he go?
Was I not unmuted?
Maybe not. Okay, there you go.
Thank you. I was pushing spacebar and it just made.
I lost you in my list here, too. I couldn't find you. All right. You're good. Go ahead, Mr. Palowski.
Thank you. Sorry about that. In terms of the remediation versus the acceleration, you touched on this a little bit. But I know there's the usual summer slump, but when combined with the distance learning from the spring, in general, compared to like the normal start of the school year, where are our students, both, I guess, both academically and emotionally, since we had both of those first time go up?
So I think where our students are, as Dr. Pataya mentioned before in her remarks, that the return to school really did seem like the the opening of many other school years, right? There were the normal jitters, I think, especially probably on the part of our adult learners in this case, because we had long been apart. But, you know, certainly with our students as well. And so we really are focusing on relationships first. And we are, we are not going to focus on any kind of end of unit assessment to learn where our learners are. We are not going to sit down and have students really take, you know, for example, a benchmark assessment in the area of reading right away to start the school year. We really want to focus on relationships and doing more learning through conversations. So Dr. Nobley mentioned before the math. We, I know that actually Mrs. Swanson started this work when she was working with the elementary staff, thinking through conversations with our youngest learners all the way up through our oldest learners to diagnose really where they are and think about their next steps. And we have to remember, we've only had four days really back, today was, I guess, our fifth day, right? And one of those days being a distance learning day. So I think we're still learning where our students are, but the key is that in learning where our students are, we're going to be doing that through that formative assessment, which shouldn't seem like a sit and quiz, right? We should be thinking about really creative. We're working with our staff now to make sure that they have through our professional learning that we're offering a variety of formative assessment skills and techniques to use to know where students are individually, both those that are with us and those who are distance learners. And some of that will be through tangible pieces that students produce and other other formative assessment clues will come to us in the way of our dialogue with students. So that's really something that we're going to be working on over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. And I just want to say, I had a question written down about this, but I just want to say, somebody brought it up that we're going to hear more about the race equity and social justice portion of the curriculum. So I look I look forward to hearing about that.
We look forward to sharing that.
Yeah, board members, we will have an entire instructional highlight based on that coming up. So we're not going to address that so much tonight. Dr. Fedigan, just to piggyback off that quickly, because I think this is an important point in talking about, you know, when people hear the word assessment, they, I think, a lot of people think about like the S back or something like that. So you're talking about, as you said, very informal, quick. I'll say tricks of the trade for teachers to figure out where kids are at, right? It's not, they're not sitting down and taking a formal.
Right. That's, that's a great point. So you may remember, this, I think, was probably about 18 months ago or so during the assessment presentation. And there are some, obviously, some returning board members. We talked about those summative assessments, which are really like that long scale, right? Like a standardized assessment and end of unit assessment that's more formal and individualized. And the formative assessment that Mrs. Glennon is speaking about, that really short cycle, that was the word actually we used in that board presentation some time ago, is a really in the moment assessment. And that is so much more valuable because it gives us feedback. It gives the teacher feedback and the student, by the way, feedback in the moment. So it's informal, it's quick, it's timely, and the teacher and student, by the way, can use that information in their very next move as a learner and as a teacher. And so that that kind of assessment is going to be what we use to drive our instruction. And it's amazing, you know, I've seen teachers at the elementary level, they're using time in the bathroom now and all of our students are on the dot in the hallway. Find a spot on the dot, right? So they're staying socially distanced. And you can hear the teachers saying things like, who's on dot number three? And you can, they're asking students questions even when they're standing in line, not in a drill kind of way, but in a fun, silly, I spy kind of way. So I would agree, Mrs. Glennon, they're very much like tricks of the trade. They're comfortable. There are ways that we can also emphasize the relationship aspect of our work, not so much like a formal graded piece. It's really about information gathering.
For the clarification, I think that's an important point. Ms. Will Pointon?
So first of all, I just wanted to say, wow, like that was the most comprehensive presentation. And I want to publicly just give big kudos to everyone who was involved, not just doing this multifaceted deep work for our young students, but for our adult learners as well. Every slide, every discipline you went through, I mean, the level of detail was just incredible. Every slide, every discipline you went through, I mean, the level of detail was just incredible. And I think that our team deserves very high public praise and recognition for that. My question is that you do have these incredibly detailed curriculums set up in this uncertain time. If something happens and we have to go back to exclusively remote, is all of this adaptable to go to that mode of learning?
Thank you so much for the question and thank you for the observation, first and foremost, that so much of this work really, what's predicated, the student learning outcomes are predicated by what we do with the adult learners, right? So thank you, Ms. Will Pointon, for noticing that. And I think so much of this work really did help set our teachers up for success and feeling comfortable to return and thinking about that educational recovery piece. And then there's this very real trepidation, right, of, you know, we're so wonderfully poised right now to have the bulk of our students with us in person and obviously our staff. Mrs. Kapaslan shared in a previous update, the vast majority of our staff is back with our students. And thank goodness, right now, the health metrics indicate that it's possible for us to continue in our learning trajectory this way in person. But we have gotten very good at balancing already in a very short amount of time. Dr. Pataia and I were talking about this, involving our distance learners and the work in our in-person learners. And there is great fluidity in making sure that we're meeting the needs of both of those camps. And we've spent so much time, not just on the curriculum case, Ms. Will Pointon, but also on that model of high quality instruction. So how do we make sure that this written curriculum becomes the assured experience curriculum for our kiddos that are remote, which is a minority of our students right now that are learning from home with support from their families and their teachers, and then the students that are in person? And we do recognize that we need to be prepared, to answer your question, that if we had to close schools the way we did in March, we would have to be prepared to respond from a teaching and learning, not only curriculum standpoint, but an instructional one. So that curriculum has to be matched with high, you know, high-quality instructional practices. So we are prepared to do that. We certainly hope that we will not be in that position. But we have spent the time that we've had this summer to prioritize curriculum standards, to look into additional computer software programs, to think about how we can use the platform in an appropriate way that we have through Google to support learners of all ages. Obviously, it's different. Dr. Pataia has mentioned this. Nothing is ever quite the same as having our students in a room with their peers and their teacher. And we're going to hope that that's the way we can stay. But we are constantly thinking about if we have to shift, how do we make sure that we maintain a very strong experience with this robust curriculum, a very strong learning experience for our kids? And we want to make sure that we continue to plan for the adult learners along the way so that they feel supported in whatever way they're teaching, in person or they're distance learners at home, or if, God forbid, they're teaching from home for a time. I hope that answers your question.
It does, it does. And again, I just think that what you have done for, you know, both sides of the educational process deserves a lot of public recognition. No one had a vacation, no one had a summer off, and I think that should be recognized.
I can't believe they still answer our phones and emails. But Dr. Pataia said the other day, we were talking about, thank you, Ms. Will Pointon, for recognizing the team. We were talking about, you know, gearing up for open house. In September, you get ready to gear up for open house. And we're ready to showcase teaching and learning and curriculum and what's on deck this year. And even open house has to look different. And we need to plan that systemically. And she said, "Amy, they're tired, but they've not had a day off, they haven't had a half a day off, really." You know, this team, and you've heard how many educators were involved in this work at the school building level this summer. And she said, "Do you think that they will?" And when I tell you the different subcommittees that we've put together to launch a strong September and October and beyond, they're always showing up, and this particular group is always leading steadfastly and comforting their colleagues along the way. And they're certainly an impressive group, so thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you.
Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. I was struck that this is, this was a very 2020 presentation because there was a lot of balls in the air. I want to ditto what Ms. Wolf Pointon said. I think that it's pretty remarkable, the work that's been put in. I'm not surprised, judging from the team that we have put together. But, and the fact that you were able to, at the same time as working towards COVID-related educational recovery, also do this other huge heavy lift on all of the other curriculum is pretty remarkable and probably not something that has been done in many districts throughout this state. So I applaud everyone on the call for that and all the teachers and staff that were involved in it as well. I wanted to ask about this idea of acceleration a little bit and how it corresponds to HQI. Because my understanding about HQI is it's very much related to, and I'm sure you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Fedigan, but very much related to meeting kids where they are. And from what I heard about acceleration, it's taking all kids and putting them, and fast-forwarding them a little bit to where they're supposed to be from where they may have ended last year because of, it was such a unique end of the year. So I wonder if you could talk a little bit about how that HQI model syncs up with the acceleration?
I thank you for the question, Mr. DeYoung. So I did put the model for high quality instruction back onto the screen. Kind of small. Can everyone see it?
Yeah.
Well enough? Okay. So you are right. It's about meeting kids where they are. And acceleration isn't just getting them to the standard and forgetting about what it takes to get them there, but it's presenting the grade level content, the grade level standard, identifying where the student is and finding the pathway to get them there, right? So it doesn't mean that you go back in time and you think about, you know, for a child who may be struggling with a certain concept, you know, with multiplication going necessarily. And if I botch this, I hope our instructional supervisors, who are much more experts in the area of mathematics, will rescue me. But it doesn't mean going all the way back, right, to a primary skill and focusing on and staying on addition for six months, right? Because then the curriculum continues to keep pace and students that maybe were at grade level right at the start of the year are moving on, and the gap just continues to increase. So we have to find ways to focus on grade level content, standards and skills, and identifying, again, through quick, short-term formative assessments where students are and accelerating them toward that standard without going, you know, step by step, every, throughout every lesson and every chapter, the way probably, quite frankly, most of us learned along the standards. Standards have been around for a long time. I don't know if Dr. Nobley or Mrs. Swanson, if I, if that was not a good example that I gave. I'm trying to think of a concrete teaching and learning example of how we might draw a parallel to the model of high quality instruction in the way of acceleration with a content, a concept from your content.
Yeah, I mean, I can, Dr. Fedigan, I think you hit the key points there. I think it's thinking about, like you said, where, meeting kids where they are in the, with the goal of moving them toward grade level and quite frankly, beyond. We talk, we talk to teachers all the time, great, grade level standards are the minimum expectation for all our students. That's what, that's our, and we want all students to meet those expectations and move beyond them. So what supports or scaffolds do they need? You'll see feedback and formative assessment on the model for high quality instruction, which are key components of acceleration. So what supports do they need in terms of feedback? We've talked a lot about a formative assessment. What types of tasks, so you can see that on the model of high quality instruction as well, are going to best be used as vehicles to help our, to help our students move forward in their learning? And then there's this idea, just like Dr. Fedigan said, instead of kind of the old model of remediation, which is kind of backfilling, you know, thinking, okay, I'll just, I'll just teach the student, try to fill every gap potentially that they might have in unfinished learning, which obviously is really hard to do, and move them forward. Thinking more in terms of how do I, how do I react just in time to what the student needs rather than just giving them all this information just in case? So I might be able to use grade level content, for instance, in fifth grade, if a student is struggling with place value, which is a concept, just to use a concrete example, as Dr. Fedigan asked, that's developed and potentially in grades below that. You might use the word with multi-digit multiplication to move them forward in that area. So that's a grade level standard, a grade level expectation. I'm able to use that to accelerate kids' learning potentially in an area that they might have some unfinished learning in while keeping them moving forward with the grade level content and making progress toward that. So many of the elements of high quality instruction need to happen, need to be part of that for that to happen. Like I said, most notably, formative assessment, feedback, and the types of tasks that we're putting in front of students.
Thank you, Dr. Nobley. The only other thing I might add is the reason why that's so critically important, Mr. DeYoung, is that if we, instead of focusing on the grade level content and the standard, right? And again, as Dr. Nobley mentioned, that's a low bar, the standard's a bare minimum. If we focus on what we think students last did well, right? Or where they last mastered a skill or concept, we can unfortunately make a misguided assumption about where they are and what they need next. So it can be very much like wasting, wasting, wasting time with a student, right? Because we're assuming that this is the last skill that they mastered and did well. They're not yet here, so we're going to go back and backfill when really, there maybe could have been just a quick adjustment. It kind of reminds me of, you know, I don't know if any of you are visually impaired like me, right? And you go to the doctor and they say, "Is it better, is it better screen one or screen two?", right? And you're thinking, if you go all the way again, you go all the way back to the lowest prescription and you don't, you don't kind of think to what 2020 looks like, you can waste a lot of time in between. I don't know if that was, if that's a good example. But we make an incorrect assumption about what students are getting wrong if we go back to a model of remediation and we think about what they last mastered. We want to think to that grade level standard and figure out how to get the student from what they've last demonstrated to that. And instead of thinking about taking a slower remedial approach, because then we're really losing a lot of time.
Yeah, thanks for that. And that's, I think that was a really good explanation from both of you, so I appreciate it. It makes it a lot clearer. So just, if I can just piggyback on that, though, so if you, you know, you guys touched on if someone is at, is below grade level, someone is at grade level or above grade level, and they have excelled in a particular area, what does that look like on the flip side of that? And how, and how do you avoid a student, you know, sort of racing ahead of the rest of the class and causing that other, the other end of the spectrum to be a problem?
Oh, I don't think we would ever want to avoid any student from racing ahead, right? We want to, again, meet all students where they are. And this, this model for high quality instruction and this idea of acceleration is much improved over a model of remediation for, that's another important, critical reason that you just pointed out. Because if we're operating under a remediation model and we're assuming things about what students know and are able to do, we can lose a lot of students through disengagement because they've already maybe mastered something, and now we're staying stuck in a concept that's, that's a prerequisite skill, right? So again, through conversation, and through multiple means of formative assessment, dialoguing, interviewing, and I don't mean a formal interview. I mean, you know, teachers working with students one-on-one in small group, comfortably finding out where they are and what's behind their thinking. It's through that that we can also recognize students who are, as Dr. Nobley pointed out, the grade level standard in each of these, these discipline areas is a bare minimum expectation. We expect students to be there or beyond. So this model for acceleration also allows us to not hold students back so that we can remediate where students are who maybe were not there yet, right? So it provides us an opportunity to look to the standard as, like a common ground, to get everybody there, fill in the gaps for students who may be missing a step or two, adjusting and tweaking, but also honoring and accelerating students that are ready for a more rigorous learning opportunity. And that's really the art and science of what the teacher does, right? That, but we have these really strong curriculum maps. And just to go back to that, the curriculum map is that, you know, large, at-a-glance template for really what should be covered in a course or grade level. And it's the implementation guide that informs the teacher's daily practice. As those are written now in science this year, and they'll be written in the other areas according to our curriculum revision calendar, it's that implementation guide that the teacher can use to guide that day-to-day instruction coupled with the formative assessment, right? And the feedback that's shared between student and child, a student and teacher, students and their peers to accelerate their learning. So we can't just go by a flat map or a flat guide. We have to be responsive to the student in front of us. That's probably the most critical piece of our recipe, right? It's the strong curriculum and the instruction, the assessment practice, the professional learning that supports it all. But at the center of all of that is the student. And it's the art and science of a skilled teacher that can be responsive to what every child in the class needs.
Right, that's terrific. I appreciate the explanation. And I, I think the work is just incredible, and I'm really appreciative for it. I probably have about a thousand more questions, and I won't ask them all, Ms. Glennon, I promise, but I just have one more. I wanted to go back to the science curriculum that was written. And we spent a lot of time talking about the science labs and also the science teachers during the budget process. And I was hoping you could talk a little bit about what that looks like during COVID times. Are they pushing into classes, or how is that happening?
They are. So as Dr. Nobley and actually Mrs. Swanson both mentioned, and all the supervisors, you know, we do have to think really creatively about the health and safety guidelines. So there are issues, obviously, with sharing some of the materials and the equipment. So Dr. Pataia reminds us all the time, you know, we still have the vision, it's still our reality. It's still, we're still focusing on making these dreams that she so eloquently shared in her budget presentation become a reality. They look a little bit different this year because of the natural circumstance that we're in. The good news is, though, that we have hired our STEM educators. They are placed in each of our schools. They were involved in writing with the guiding coalition and the very wonderful teaching teams who are dedicated to write the curriculum and the implementation guides, the maps and the implementation guides this past summer, under the direction of Dr. Nobley and Mrs. Swanson. And so that strong professional learning has already taken root. And we are very fortunate to have the STEM educators in our schools now. Again, we're only on day five in, and one of those days is a distance learning day. But they're there, and we will be able to do as many hands-on experiences as possible in a safe way. But it's going to be wonderful that we have them there because they can still work to push in, as you indicated, to the classrooms at the elementary level to support this initial year of implementation. And, and we know that the year ahead, we'll be able to continue, I'm sure, with untethered STEM, exciting STEM experiments in those STEM labs. So today is, today and the days ahead this year will really be kind of a preview. And we'll be doing as much as we can in the classroom with the STEM educator and the classroom teacher collaborating. And I know that they'll be able to think creatively and innovatively to make those experiences be very strong. And in the year ahead, I think our labs will be open in full swing.
Dr. Fedigan, Dr. Fedigan, I think that some of our schools have redeployed their STEM educators, is that correct?
Some, not all.
So to be completely transparent, our science labs probably won't get a real start until next year. Some schools, because we've had to go to cohorts to decrease class size, and we are reducing the number of FTEs we're adding, sorry, that's the wrong way to say it. So we wouldn't have to add as many FTEs, had to redeploy their STEM educators by making them cohort teachers. So there are some schools that don't have a full-time STEM person teaching science pushing in because of their size and the need to decrease the size of the cohort. So, Mr. DeYoung, and we could talk more about this in our budget work next month, but we, we are going to have to treat 2122 as the first year of elementary science labs. It would be unfair to say that this year is year one.
Okay.
They're there, though, to support the curriculum work that's been happening. But yeah, some have had to be redeployed. In some schools.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Fedigan, for your leadership. I think, you know, you don't get the kudos that you deserve oftentimes. So we really appreciate, and appreciate the whole team, but appreciate certainly your leadership on this. I think it's just incredible work, so thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Ratner?
I agree. It's absolutely amazing work, and thank you all so, so much. The question I have deals with- The question I have deals with the pathways to get the individual from their acceleration and seeing the needs, and I love the way that that's done, to now that we need the six feet apart, is it completely individuals, learning partners, are they teams and groups? And they're all, you know, six feet apart when you see what the needs are going through the acceleration.
Right. So we know, right, that at all levels, we try to tend, we try to have a mini lesson that's brief and then have the students try their new learning, either independently or with peers. And part of, part of our new instructional model and the way of making sure that we're being very careful with our distance protocols to keep students socially distanced is to make sure that students are not maybe as close as they were before, but students are certainly working together, they're working collaboratively, they're just doing so in a socially distanced way. And they're, they're each having their own materials so that they don't have to share those, but definitely students are able to collaborate, not only when they're in the classroom space, but also through their distance learning experiences at home or whether they're in school learning in person and they're a distance learner at home, they're still able to, able to collaborate even if they're not in the same physical space. So students are working independently, collaboratively and in partners, just the way they always have.
It's wonderful that the balance with everything, including the S E L with the scholarship and all citizenship, it's just remarkable. Thank you all.
Any other questions from anyone who has not had a chance to ask a question yet? I'm seeing no more hands up. Okay. So again, I'll turn the meeting back over to Dr. Kutaia. Just one last time, just thank you so much for the presentation. It was really fabulous.
You're welcome.
Dr. Kutaia?
Dr. Fedigan, can you stop sharing your screen?
Will do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What we have for the board is a second read on the policy, Ms. Glennon.
Just ask if we're actually requested on this, please. And just like we do with our, our student reps, if our administrators would like to go now and log off, we appreciate your time and attendance in the meeting. So completely up to our administrative team, really appreciate your hard work, know that you guys will be back, back at it early in the morning. So thank you, everybody. Good night.
Ms. Glennon, over to you for.
Okay, thank you. So we have a policy 6114.81 pandemic, epidemic or other declared emergency, emergency suspension of policy for a second reading. Ms. Petroski, do you have a motion to get started with this?
I do have a motion. A move that the Milford Board of Education approves policy 6114.81 pandemic, epidemic or other declared emergencies, suspension of policy as presented by administration.
Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Fowler, seconds.
Fowler, seconds. All right. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. As I expressed at the previous meeting when we had the first reading of this policy, it's my belief that the policy goes too far and gives the superintendent and administration too far-reaching powers, even under the circumstances of a emergency declaration. It's not, in my view, clearly spelled out as to what power or what policies are able to be suspended, even though there is a non-exhaustive list in the policy. And in, in my view, it leaves the board and the school district open to misuse of this policy. I don't believe that's a, would be a problem with the current administration, but I am concerned that five years from now, 10 years from now, that that could become a problem. So I wanted to express that again and share that comment with the board.
Any other discussion from board members? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry, Mr. Palowski?
Thank you. I just wanted to second what Mr. DeYoung said.
Other comments? Or questions? All right, seeing none. Ms. Griffin, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Adam DeYoung?
No.
Andrew Fowler?
No.
Rita Hennessy?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
Warren Palowski?
No.
Una Petroski?
Yes.
Betsy Ratner?
Ratner, you're muted.
Yes.
Nicole Watson?
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Seven-three, the motion passes.
Passes seven-three. All right, thank you all. Item number four, Dr. Kutaia?
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. We'll turn it over to Ms. Kapazna for a human resources report.
Thank you. I'm having some problem with my audio, so hopefully this will work. You have in my report, the current list of job postings, which is rather vast. Next month, I promise it'll be much shorter, as well as all personnel changes for the month. We have personnel recommendations, retirements, resignations, terminations and stipend appointments, including the student assistance team stipend for the year. Just wanted to report that it's been a busy summer, as you can imagine, as that has been reported. And although the list of personnel recommendations is long, the list of retirements, resignations and terminations is much shorter, so we're in a good spot so far.
Are there questions for Ms. Kapazna on the human resources report?
Okay.
Okay, seeing none, yep.
Thank you. Mr. Richatelli for the dispersment report, which this board should have received a edited version this afternoon.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Kutaia, Mrs. Glennon and members of the board. Your package originally was the, the dispersments for the month of August for over $1,500. And then today, we were asked to highlight those items that are COVID-related. And so in what you probably, or what you did receive today from Ms. Griffin is that highlighted version, which indicates the items that are COVID-related. I will point out that there are a number of line items that are not strictly COVID-related. For instance, on the very first page of the amazon.com, non-instructional supplies, some of the items in that package were not COVID-related, but for the most, were. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Richatelli, some of the items, some of them are blends, so some of the lines are blend, you're saying? Or just that one?
No, no, there could be other lines that it's not exclusively COVID-related, but for the most part, they are.
All right, very good. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you. I have one question on one of the items highlighted for COVID. It's, I don't know how to reference it, but it's a, to Bank of America for non-instructional supplies catered to Krans dash COVID. Just, do we buy Krans from Bank of America?
Good question. No, good, good question, but those, Bank of America is the district's credit card. And so there are some vendors that will not accept a purchase order. And in those particular cases, in very, very limited cases, we have to use the district credit card. And that's why it's to Bank of America, but it was probably to a vendor that would not accept a purchase order and we needed something to be delivered quickly. Good question, though.
Gotcha, thank you.
Could you?
Other questions on the dispersment report? Okay, seeing none.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. That's all for the superintendent's report.
Dr. Kutaia, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Petroski, do you have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
I do, Una Petroski. I move that the Milford Board of Education approves consent agenda items, August 24th, 2020, board business minutes as presented.
There's a second?
Mr. Fowler, seconds.
Can you do a roll call vote, Ms. Griffin, please?
Andrew, Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
Yes.
Rita Hennessy?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
Warren Palowski?
Yes.
Una Petroski?
Yes.
Betsy Ratner?
Yes.
Nicole Watson?
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, we move on to board comment. Any board members wish to make a board comment this evening? Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. I just wanted to say that I think the capacity of our school district is unparalleled in the state of Connecticut. And I think that we are, as a community, in all, with all stakeholders, should count our blessings that we have the people running our district that they do, that we do. From Dr. Kutaia all the way down to the, the last person on the payroll. This, this start to the school year was so unusual and it's been said a million times, but it went about as flawlessly as possible. And every day you hear on the news, this problem at this district, this problem at this district. And fingers crossed, we don't hear it too often about our district. And it's top-down leadership that really trickles down to every level of the district. And I'm so appreciative to each individual person who does their job so well. And to you, Dr. Kutaia, for your leadership, I think it's just really remarkable. So everyone should be applauded and I know that we're, we'll continue to have a great school year. So thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Hennessy?
I'm very similar to what Mr. DeYoung has just said. I just want to thank everyone from Dr. Kutaia, Dr. Fedigan, food services, facilities, IT department with making sure every student has a working device and in some cases, hotspots. Everyone for the past six months have really done a lot to help our students. And, you know, we just, I want to let you know that I just appreciate that and I'm sure the parents appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Hennessy, Ms. Petroski?
I just also wanted to just give kudos to you guys. It's been, you can't even say it was a heavy lift. There's no such thing as what you guys have accomplished. So I just wanted to say thank you so much. I really do think that you have gone above and beyond.
Very much. Anyone else? Mr. Fowler?
Thank you. I'd just like to also thank the administration for all the hard work they do and have done. And I just want to wish our students and teachers all the best and I thank you guys daily. And I just, yeah, hope for a great school year.
Fowler, Ms. Ratner?
I agree with everything that was said and just want to say that I think Milford School District is an award-winning school district and it's not just for Connecticut, it's everywhere. So thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Ratner. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none. Welcome back, everybody. Welcome back to the district. Welcome back, Dr. Kutaia and staff. And we will gather again on September 29th, which is a Tuesday, for our committee of the whole meeting. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Una Petroski, a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Mr. Fowler, seconds.
Mr. Fowler, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good night, everyone. Sorry for the late hour and sorry again for the delay getting going. So we'll see everybody soon.
Everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Bye-bye.